Okay, I'd like to, good morning, I'd like to welcome everybody for Friday, January 26th, a special meeting. I call this meeting to order. Will we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does any of the board members have any conflict of interest on any of the resolutions today?
No.
No.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to, in a second, to add a resolution to the at the dais.
Make a motion.
Okay, a second, please.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's added. Okay, Liz, you got it.
Resolution 126-1 of 2024, resolution authorizing the Town of Hyde Park Town Board to appoint Cecilia Coppola as hourly secretary to the town supervisor.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Will the clerk please take the roll call vote?
Councilwoman Ms. Squida.
Aye.
Councilman Lombardi.
Aye.
Councilman Prusakowski.
Aye.
And Supervisor Torjiani.
Aye. John?
Yep. Amended on January 24, 2024, at 3:50 PM. Resolution 126-2 of 2024, resolution authorizing the Town of Hyde Park Town Board to authorize Vanderwater and Vanderwater LLP to settle the tax proceedings filed against the Town of Hyde Park.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Will the clerk please take the roll call vote?
Councilwoman Ms. Squida.
Aye.
Councilman Lombardi.
Aye.
Councilman Prusakowski.
Aye.
And Supervisor Torjiani.
Aye. Motion carried.
Resolution 1-263 of 2024, resolution authorizing the Town of Hyde Park Town Board to authorize Vanderwater and Vanderwater LLP to enforce conditions of approval for Norrie Park Estates, including road improvements.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Will the clerk please take the roll call vote?
Councilwoman Ms. Squida.
Aye.
Councilman Lombardi.
Aye.
Councilman Prusakowski.
Aye.
And Supervisor Torjiani.
Aye.
Back to me. Resolution 126-4 of 2024, resolution authorizing the Town of Hyde Park Town Board to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Hyde Park Police Benevolent Association and the Town of Hyde Park.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Will the clerk please take the roll call vote?
Councilwoman Ms. Squida.
Aye.
Councilman Lombardi.
Aye.
Councilman Prusakowski.
Aye.
And Supervisor Torjiani.
Aye. Motion carried.
This one's added at the dais, but this is Resolution 126-5 of 2024, resolution approving a memorandum of agreement, M.O.A., in connection with the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Hyde Park Police Benevolent Association and the Town of Hyde Park.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Will the clerk please take the roll call vote?
Councilwoman Ms. Squida.
Aye.
Councilman Lombardi.
Aye.
Councilman Prusakowski.
Aye.
And Supervisor Torjiani.
Aye. Motion carried.
Resolution 126-5, I'm sorry, -6 of 2024, resolution authorizing the Town of Hyde Park Town Board to appoint Stephen Riley as full-time police officer to the Town of Hyde Park Police Department.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Will the clerk please take the roll call vote?
Councilwoman Ms. Squida.
Aye.
Councilman Lombardi.
Aye.
Councilman Prusakowski.
Aye.
And Supervisor Torjiani.
Aye. Motion carried.
All right, Chief, congratulations to some more manpower for you.
Thank you. Can I help save some money?
Okay, for new and old business, we'd like to have our attorney for the town give an update on where we are with the cannabis, the special standards for cannabis establishments within the Town of Hyde Park and what we're thinking.
Thank you. So there's a couple of sort of overarching principles in the draft that you've got in front of you. One is that I've made it a special permit so that even where it's allowed, it'll have to be subject to certain conditions that could be imposed. The other is that I've drafted it so this would be a special permit that the Town Board would issue. You do a referral to the planning board, but it would actually be issued by the Town Board. Now, you don't, that's perfectly acceptable, various towns do that for various reasons. That's a decision for you to make, but I think it seems like an important enough issue that you may want to consider having, you know, control here at the Town Board.
Oh, without doubt.
Of those disputes. So that's, that's the, not disputes, but issues. So that's another thing. The other thing is that the, the legal parameters of something like this are that you can't zone a use out of your town entirely. That'll be struck down by the courts. I mean, unless it's an illegal use. So you've got to have some provision for where these things can go. The approach that I took for purposes of the draft was to keep it along state roads, so 9, 9G, and to keep it only in, and these are just suggestions, and I'll explain why in a minute, the NB and the CB, which are your, they basically are your commercial districts as you go up 9 or over on 9W. I've, I'm sorry.
9G.
9G, 9W is my side of the room. Anyway, so I also suggested a mile distance apart. I put one in there just as a marker, but it's something we should discuss. If you make that mile distance too long, it's another thing that'll be susceptible to court regulation. So you have to be a little careful about that, like you can't just say, you know, 10 miles from each other when your town is 10 miles long, you know, that kind of thing. So you got to be a little careful about that. If, so, the, the establishment that is before us now, by the way, is down at the very bottom of town, as I think you all know, it's in the NBD district, and it kind of behind it is the waterfront district. The other reason I chose those parameters is because it generally keeps you away from, some of those NBD and CB areas have residential behind it, but in general, between the state roads and the NB and CB districts, you, you keep it away from municipalities, or municipalities, residences, because it has to have frontage on those roads. And then the last thing is, it's got a distance requirement of 500 feet from any, basically any public building or educational facility. And so, the, the thing to consider is whether, I think it may well be acceptable and past legal muster, if the NBD and the CB make sense for the reasons that I mentioned, you could potentially choose, you know, just the CB or just the NBD. But to, to give you some orientation, as I'm sure you've already noticed, the NBD and CB all by themselves kind of automatically limit you to about three spots as you go north in town. Down at the bottom, right in the middle where the CB is, and then there's a small section of NBD up at the top. And then the closest you get on the state roads, by my estimation, the difference between 9 and 9G down at the bottom of the map is about one mile. So that's like as, you know, other than that, you know, that's sort of conceptually what you need to be thinking about in terms of where you want these things. And so all of those things are starting points for all of you to think about. You know, like, I'm sure you all have your own thoughts about, you know, this issue and where they should be, and, you know, for all I know, I'm completely off on your preferences, but these are the things that, based on looking at other model laws, doing legal research, you know, made at least some initial sense to me.
Are we able to eliminate the, the town center and areas like Gov. where it's the business district, like Cross Street from here? Because if we go a mile apart, they'll end up all in, you know, you'll end up with a lot of them. In 10 miles, you could have 10. And both, and then if they're a mile apart, they can go over to 9G and have 10 going up.
Well, you're, you're right in theory, but I think between the two, the three different parameters, I think you would avoid a lot of that, and that is to say, there will be places where they'd be, oh, by the way, on the distances, the way I wrote it, it's border, it's property line to property line, not door to door, which I think is a good idea. But anyway, they, they would have to meet all three criteria. So even in places where they're a mile or less apart, they still would have to be in the, the way I wrote it, in the NBD or CB zone. And they'd have to be a certain distance from, as I said, municipal buildings, school buildings, libraries, things like that, religious uses. That should provide you some natural separation.
Don't we have in, in the center of town CB zones?
I, isn't that, yeah, I think that's that, that strip of CB.
Yeah.
Right there. So, no, that is definitely, as I pointed out, that's your, I don't know what you want to call it, problem spot, you know what I mean? That's your, like, if you do NB and CB, then you end up with really three fairly significant strips where it can be. You could, you could choose one or the other. You could choose different districts altogether if you want, but you're only really left with green belt, residential, and waterfront, so.
Well, there's nothing down to waterfront.
Right, right. So I think, I think you are generally talking about.
I think he's currently in the waterfront district.
I, Bonnie told me that, that he's in the NBD, but I think you're probably thinking that because it's right, I think it's right in front of the waterfront.
It is.
It's right, it's right next to it, yeah.
So I think to have clarity for our public, for our public input and move forward, we should take that map and blow it up and put the neighborhood business in the commercial, in the CB zones on them so that we have a better understanding of where they could plop in, in the village.
I was thinking, we might even be able to get something from GIS that will even put scales on it?
Yeah, because we, this is going to be hard to digest, because now, if we are, if the board is in all agreeance to this, I want to be able to, for everybody to look at what's in town.
Yeah.
And where the potential could be for an applicant.
Yeah.
To see if we, we're in all in agreeance to have that in, in the village or not in the village.
Yeah, you might get.
You could end up with 20 of them a mile apart.
Well, no.
No, because, Joe, what's, so, so we all have a better understanding, from one side of town to the other, what's the, what's the mileage?
It's about three and a half, maybe four miles at its widest point, and it's about 11 miles north to south.
Okay, so we're four, four, four miles wide and north to south 11. And what made you determine that a mile was sufficient, or what?
Because I've seen it in other places, and, now, by the way, as you all know, this is pretty new, so there's legal challenges going on as we speak, even to the state law on this thing. But the general consensus among the legal community is that when you get above a mile, you're more susceptible to getting overturned. Now, having said that, like I said, it's not like there's 12 cases out there that decide these things. I mean, there's a reason I highlighted it in the thing. You can make it two miles, you know what I mean?
No, no, well, that's the question. So you're one in Newport, or the one that you took your base draft from, can you give us a comparison? How long is Newport? Is it 11 miles? Is it somewhat similar? Because if something's four or five miles, a mile seems feasible. 11 miles, like Al says, we could have 10 of them on that strip. I'm thinking that's excessive.
Yeah. No, it's definitely, it's definitely excessive, and your idea of the map is a good one, because I think when you apply all the different standards, you'll end up further spread apart than you think. In other words, even if they're as close as a mile, if they're not in the right district, they can't.
So that's, that's one mechanism with, with two or three more added.
You add like three layers onto it, the distance between municipal buildings and schools and religious uses.
Can we increase that?
Yeah.
Make it 1,000 feet instead of 500 feet?
Sure.
But if we had a map, and then we, then we took our numbers and then plugged the distances, we could see, if we had the map and said, okay, here's the school.
Right.
Now let's go 1,000 feet, where does that bring us? Let's do 500, where it brings us?
We got to go in both directions.
Yeah, no, there's, there's no question that you want to drill down pretty deep into this. This was meant to give you a representative framework of the kinds of things you can do, and, but obviously, again, it's, this is a legislative decision, and I won't, you know, I'll try to advise you not to do something I know will definitely be overturned, but I think there is a wide parameter here that you can use. The other thing I want to mention that's in here, as you guys go through it, you know, at home on your own time, is I've got provisions in here about these, these uses would have to show particular security measures so that, you know, they don't end up being like nuisances in town, you know, like loiterers.
Well, it's my understanding that the state has the mechanisms already in place for the applicant.
They, they do have, yeah, it's almost like.
That's where.
It's cameras, it's this, it's that, there's a protocol that they have to follow.
Right.
That's where some of this came from.
Yep.
So, so should we, are you thinking that we should increase or the mechanism?
In a, in a couple of items, I, I added some things, but generally speaking, for instance, all these definitions, you know, not all of them, a couple of them I wrote for purposes of the law, but most of them come right from the state, you know, and, you know, the state law, and a lot of the security measures do as well. So, yeah, I mean, that's, I, I think what you've mentioned, John, is, is a great idea. I'll ask GIS to give us a map that, that, where you could literally just use a ruler and go from here to there, there to there, and figure the whole thing out. Because I do think, you should, here's the thing, if you tell me what you're comfortable with in terms of where you want this, there will be a way to write the law to put it there. I guess that's what I would say.
Five miles?
Yeah, I think if you, this is, I'm just thinking now, I need the map just like John does, but, but I think if you went, for instance, five miles, you'd split the town in half, and you'd still have all those other layers, which is distance from churches and distance from public buildings, stuff like that.
That's what would protect us in the.
Yeah, but I don't know, like you say, without the map, that five miles might be, with the protection, you might not get one five miles apart, it brings you one on one side of town, one on the other, which is problematic.
You're right. No, that's right.
So we need to have the map to scale to determine that.
No question, yeah. Today, I mainly just wanted to give you an idea of what you're looking at and, and allow these thoughts to come to mind.
But they can only go into the zones that you have labeled CB and/or.
NBD.
Or NBD. Those are the only, regardless of it being 11 miles long.
Right.
They, the, the, this is written so that they can only go in the zones that are NB.
Yep.
Or CB.
Or CD.
So your longest strip where you've got a risk of, of, you know, let's say, three, let's say, is you've got NBD right at the bottom of the town where this new applicant is coming, and then you get that, that central business, you know, right in the middle of town. So that's, that's your, like, long, that's your longest, like, risk area in terms of proliferation, because the next NB is way up there.
Well, what if we took out the CB?
You could do that.
Take it out. That guarantees it won't be in there, central business.
Commercial business?
Yeah.
Uh.
I mean, the problem is, it's probably where it belongs.
Yeah, I, I would say, I would say we got to scale it, because I don't know where it falls.
Right.
It falls right at the town center, I bet.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So that's why I say, once we scale that, we can get the dimension, you, everybody shoot from the hip, one mile, five miles, we'll scale it and see exactly what it is to make the determination.
Yeah.
But if you take out the central, central business, right, you're, you're five miles, and with the 1,000 away, you're, you're not going anywhere's in that middle area on the nine side. 9G.
The, the CB is, is the commercial, commercial business?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's.
It's like the center.
Yeah, center of town.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, if you eliminate that, it keeps you out of there. And then if you got the 1,000 feet, you need a direction, you're definitely not coming anywhere near the center of town.
Yeah.
But if you go on 9G side at five miles, you could plop one there.
But 9G.
Well, why couldn't you, if that's the case, why wouldn't Joe structure it to have the language of what our actual ten is, to keep it to the, on the outside perimeters in a specific.
Well, that's, this, this is the first.
No, 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 I'm saying.
That's why the mile part and all that.
No, I'm saying, why go through all the mileage and the distance and stuff? Let's have the language actually so that the applicant knows that, listen, you know, it's allowed, but it's only allowed on the outside perimeters of.
Yeah.
Now, let me ask another question. Because of, is, is, is there any language in here that says you must already have in your freaking name the license?
Yes.
That says that?
Yep.
Because this way, we get out of the, the people out of just trying to get a location and sell a location to somebody.
Yeah. No, they have to have their state license first. It's part of the application package.
And it has to be that person, that sign.
Yeah.
Now, see, I, I'm reading this different, maybe I'm interpreting it different, but when I did my research, and the people that do the filings here, they're, they're getting their approval from New York State, but they're, the physical address of where their approval is comes thereafter.
Yes.
So how do you, how do you get the approval from the state without having a physical location?
The approval from the state means they've been vetted as a, as a person entitled to a license, right? And so they've got like a background check.
No, I get that, but what I'm saying is, part of that process, you don't need the location.
Right.
So, I mean, how to, you know, just to let you know that.
Yeah.
It's to, when an applicant goes and applies to the state, they don't need the physical, they don't need the physical location put on the documents.
Right, that's right.
So we would have to figure out how, when that mechanism would, would need to be applied so that we have a better understanding.
Yeah. The 9G, the protection there, if I'm not mistaken, and I did try to do this right, is that I think there's only really one section of NBD on 9G, if I'm not mistaken, and it's down near the bottom there, and I don't even think there's a CB along 9G. So that's your protection on the 9G side. But, but.
Yeah, I got to question that map, because I think, I know that, I thought.
They re-zoned up by us.
Well, Oakridge Plaza, where that is, I think I'm in the neighborhood business district, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, that's interesting.
So there, there, I don't know, we would have to check that and see.
My property's our neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, so there are.
I'm at the end of the.
There are a lot of.
Mine's actually the end of it.
Weird zoning in them areas, we would have to, we'd have to file that 9G corridor and find out what, where they're at.
But I think, at the end of the day, I think that you've got it exactly right. What we need to do is get a two-scale map that you can really look at, decide first where you want these things, and then I'll draft the parameters around that.
Zigzag.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to give you a.
No, and then we should, then, prior to adopting this, we should shade where the potential areas are so that we, we got a better understanding.
And then a public hearing on that.
And then the public can actually see it, because this is where nobody's going to be able to figure this out.
Right, right. I think that's exactly right. Yep.
No, because we want to, listen, we want to be clear where they're going to go, right?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, because.
But how many do you think we should have in a town this size?
Well, right now, we have, filed with the town clerk, I think we had three or four applicants.
Right.
Already, and, and the state is still.
Oh, I didn't know that.
The state is still approving.
Yeah.
And venting some out, right? We got, I, I seen that we had.
Well, one of them's right here.
Well, one's there, but I'm saying, I know there was two.
But they don't have a license.
No, and, and you have people that are going, the second round at Dutchess Community College for that 16-hour class just started, so them people, that was part of the process to get through the state process. So now, they're just getting ready to do that second class, so I'm thinking that we're going to have some more applications to follow.
Well, once you hit your number, you hit, once you hit your.
Maximum.
How many, maximum you can have, that's it. You can't accept any app, you can't, can't do anymore.
Yeah.
You don't want, like I said, you don't want 10 of them in this town.
Right. So above and beyond, Joe, with the distances stuff, when we developed a map, could we put, and I know originally you said you couldn't do this, a maximum number, but when we have the zoning in place with all the standards, we can actually plot where we're, the number's not going to exceed so many anyway.
That's right. No, if you put a hard number, that is definitely going to be subject to judicial scrutiny.
What do you think should be in the town this size?
Oh, he's just saying you don't want to go with a number.
What?
No, but the number, we, we could develop the number in our minds.
And then you develop with the map.
Yes.
Where they're going to end, you know, the shade area.
I'm, I'm thinking if we have more than four, it's too much, myself.
I think so.
Four sounds about right. So I'm saying, if you keep it on the outskirts, you got Route 9, north and, north and south at the boundaries, that's two, and you got 9G, north and south at the boundaries, another two, it's four.
Yeah.
Just talking off the top of my head, but we need to map it out first to make sure it makes sense, right?
Yeah, and that would be if you went with just NBD, you'd, you'd really be hitting kind of the four corners.
And stretching.
Three corners, actually.
And stretching the distance from schools and stuff.
Yeah, because you'd stay away from the high school, you'd stay away from your municipal building, you'd get all that stuff, churches. So, so, yeah, look, why don't I do that? I'll, I'll get GIS to make us a map that'll allow us to do that, and then we, and then I'll even draw some, I'll do some arts and crafts, I'll draw those lines, you know what I mean? I'll, I'll show you where it'll all be.
So there's no, there's no NB or CB right outside of neighborhood districts around here?
Not, well, you've got some neighborhood districts, like, behind the, you know, the nine, and 9G corridors, as you can see, but, but generally speaking, no.
How are we going to do that if, if you've got the main corridors, and then you have a distance setback, too? A lot of the main corridors are, if they're in the commercial or neighborhood business, there's houses right behind them. So if you did 500 feet, most of them, the corridors, there's houses right behind a business.
Well, I, so I didn't do 500 feet from a residence.
No.
Oh, okay.
Because your, your, your road frontage is on in state highway.
It's too close.
That's what we're going to get at, okay.
Yeah.
So, and what would that, would there be a setback that'd be applicable to that, or no?
You could.
No, I'm saying, a lot of pre-existing non-conforming lots that border the commercial businesses on, on the, on the commercial zone.
Right.
They're right behind them, so that's what I'm saying, how, how can you do that? Because they're, the setback couldn't exceed 50 feet or whatever, or that lot line, you know?
Right. Yeah, I'll give that some thought. It's a tough, on your map, it's a tough play, but I'll give it some thought. I'll see if I can think of a mechanism for that, because that is your.
That'll push you to the furthest tip of 9G.
So above and beyond the special permit, that would be, so we, we're gonna adopt the local law with all this language in, and then the special permit would be, need town board approval?
Right, each applicant would come before you, you'd do a referral to the planning board to get their recommendation, but you would be the decision maker.
Is there any mechanism that we could put on there, above and beyond meeting all these standards, that the town board can deny the application, subject to just the, on, on the basis that they don't like the location?
Yeah, I've got language in there, that's an undeveloped area of the law, because again, it's so new. It's that, that, they haven't even made their way through the court system on some of these matters. But I do have language in there that specifically says the town may deny any application, so that it's clear that it's not like an as-of-right thing.
Is that what you're looking for, John, language like that?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at, it can still meet all the requirements, but if there is a loophole that we end up that, you know, just by footage and this and that, it, it ends up right in the, right in the commercial zone, but there's all neighbors around it. I don't think we want it.
He's saying we have to do a public hearing.
Yeah, but I was wondering, from a legal standpoint.
Yeah, as part of the special permit process.
So we'd have to do a public hearing, you may have outcry saying, I don't want to hear.
Yeah, in each public, in each special permit application, you'd have a public hearing on the application.
So if we get, if they know about it, hey, we're, we're looking at this location, and there's homes too close, they may come out and say, no.
But I was just saying, if we have all these in the local law, would that be challengeable if we had something added that, you know, the town board has a final say? Is that challengeable? Because we got all these rules and regulations, and then when they come to us, even if the public, and we adopted that, now, now we gotta worry about denying them.
I don't know if you can stop anybody from challenging.
Yeah.
No, well, I'm asking is.
No, you're right, you can't, you can't deny something just because the, the public's opposed to it. I mean, you know, so, it's gotta be something more than you don't like it. It, the, the standards do kind of control it. You know, you've got three layers of, of zoning protection. One is something's not permitted at all. The next is that it's permitted as-of-right, right? It's just, it's permitted as-of, and then this, the next category is a special use permit, which is where it's permitted, but you can put conditions on it.
Okay.
So, so you, what you could do in certain cases where you get that kind of public outcry, is put additional conditions on it that make you feel like better lighting, security fences, or things like that, you know, to, if, if you have that kind of problem. But I, the, the first step for sure is what we were just talking about, which is to figure out where you want it, because I can draft around where you want. There's, you know what I mean, there's gonna be enough, there's gonna be enough, uh, opportunity, enough layers of regulation for me to draft something that will meet what you want. Once, as John says, we know the differences. Yeah, but you'd be surprised, we can probably do that, you know?
Zigzag.
Well, by putting the right, you know, distance and zoning restrictions on it, you probably can get very, very close to exactly what you want.
Right, because if you take out the CB.
If you take out the CB, you're already top, bottom.
And you're gonna have to go to nine G side, then you're gonna have to go back up to nine. So you could get potentially the most, I would like, is four.
Right, that's what I think. Now, I would love to see, if you think there's a better version of this map, we obviously don't want to make a mistake on that. So I don't, I'm.
We would ask Tad and Zone.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's number one. So, and now I'm thinking for, also for the public and for the input. And, and I don't know, and I don't know if the rest of the board members know, I would like to have a better understanding of the state's regulatory procedures that they have to follow in regards to, I, I don't need to know the operation inside.
Yeah.
But I would like to know what's required for lighting, cameras, uh, security, all that.
Yep.
And so that when we give the presentation to the public.
Right.
They understand what the state is mandating, and then above and beyond what we're mandating.
I'll send you all a link, you know what I mean? To the, to the website that they've created, you know, it's got its own department now and its own website. I'll send you a link to that, and it's actually pretty, it's pretty good, it's pretty self-explanatory, and I'll send you a link to the state law as well. And if we get, when we get to a public hearing on it, I'll be prepared to just generally discuss that as well with the public. So they're ready to go. So let me get that GIS map, and you guys ask Tad if there's a better zoning map, or even if she can just color one up.
Well, when we get done with the meeting, we'll walk in there and get clarity for you.
Okay. All right, good. And, and again, read it all, like, I've got highlighted sections here that are the obvious places where I need input, but, you know, it's a substantial law, and, and you may have other questions and, and.
So this was, this is, this came from Newport's?
No, it came from, it came from, I looked at three or four different municipalities throughout the state that have adopted them. I can't even remember off the top of my head which they were. I looked at a model law that in, in my business, there are, you know, there are, there are think tanks that do model laws on these things. So I looked at a model law and pulled some stuff from that. And of course, I looked at the state regulations to start, to start as a baseline.
Okay.
The other thing I did, by the way, that I think will also be limiting, is I defined these, these parameters as cannabis establishments, period. So you can get different kinds of licenses, you can get a wholesaling license, a retail license. I basically called them all cannabis establishments, so that no matter what they call.
The growing, the wholesale, whatever, everything falls under that one?
Exactly, because that way, no matter what kind of operation it is, they gotta keep to those distances and everything. Some of the, I've seen some places that are only focused on the retail stuff, but then you could end up with like a distributor in town or something like that. So, so I, again, I tried to think of all the different layers to, you know, protect from a proliferation of them. But we can, we can do it, we can accomplish what you want, I think. You know, very, within legal parameters, by understanding the map better, and, and just marking it out. So if you see, by the way, that down at the bottom is the scale there, the length of that scale is two miles.
Yeah. So, just looking at this first page, because I haven't read this, but your cannabis establishment, how you define it, how comes we don't refer to the, the state and New York, New York's application also in there too? So for, so that it's double-layered? Because that application basically tells you what, what, what process you're going through to do what.
Yeah, we could do that, sure, yeah. They, all these things that are listed there are defined in the state law, but no, that's a, that's not a bad idea. We can say that in order to be considered an cannabis establishment, you have to already have your license.
Yep.
Yeah. Yep. All right?
When's the goal that we want to at least get this to a public hearing? Do we have a goal date? I do, but do you?
So, so let's think about this. So if we get this map, and everybody has a chance to read this, and then we start, we should have another conversation.
Right.
Town board workshop.
Right.
Prior to opening up the public comment.
Right.
Right? And then.
Oh, prior to even putting it on.
Yeah, because you need your law in the final form in order for the public hearing to be.
Yeah, so we would, we, and we would do that in open format, correct?
Yeah.
So it would have to be at a town board meeting or workshop?
That part.
That part.
But the, the discussion going forward.
Well, then, then after that, if we're all in agreeance, then we got, we should set a, set the public hearing.
Yeah.
And then take the public comment.
Yep. And if there's no changes that come about, because, you know, you might get very valid public comments and you want to work on it, if so, you have one more meeting, you come back and adopt it. If, if you're very comfortable, even after you close the public hearing, you could even adopt it that night. As you know, the, the law in the form that you're gonna adopt it has to be on your desk for a certain amount of time.
Well, we couldn't adopt it that night, because you would have to draft it, and then we would have to, we would have to post it, and.
Well, he's got.
Well, it would already be drafted, by the time you had the public hearing, it would be drafted. So unless you made changes to it as a result of the public hearing, which you, look, let's face it, you probably would. I, I'm not saying you wouldn't, I'm just saying, arguably, if you made no changes to the law that was in front of the public, you had your public hearing, and they were, you know, and you were comfortable that you covered all the bases, you could act right away.
So it's potentially to adopt by April?
Yeah. You could also have a special meeting to adopt. Just call a special, in other words, have the public hearing, close the public hearing, if there's any redrafting to be done, we do it. You wait the appropriate amount of time.
Yeah, but that only gives, that only gives thirty days, so. No, I know that, but we gotta really think this out. So let's, let me ask you another question. So why we're having our workshop, could we open the public comment after the workshop and our discussion to start it then? And then, so that would give more time for input, because like you say, the public might give us valid points that we're, we're not familiar with.
Yeah, you could have me redraft this based on whatever input we get at our next work session.
No, 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 I'm saying, right after our work session, open the public comment for the people that are out in the audience, because that would give them, would give us more public comments and maybe more valid points instead of a thirty-day window. So if we open, if we did this and we put it on the agenda for you to do a presentation, we did our maps, everything like that, and we asked a question, and then we opened the public comment that same night.
Yeah.
And then continued.
But we've already done our due diligence, so what is, what we had that night there.
Even if we did our, haven't done our due diligence, maybe somebody's gonna bring a valid point up that's gonna change us in a totally different direction.
Right.
And then the following have a thirty-day public comment. So now, really, you know, it's, it's a bigger window, and, and they're working with us to, to get to the finish line.
I'll, I will check on that, I'll go back to the office and check on that, but I think you could do that, yeah.
Because now our public comment period is gonna be longer than thirty days.
Right.
Which i- it really isn't, because while we're discussing this, we're taking public comment.
Right. Yeah, as long as the law that you're taking, the version of the law that you're taking public comment on is the one you've discussed in that workshop.
Well, the workshop, when we're open for public comment, it's for discussion purposes only, I'm not asking for.
I think that stretches it out.
No, it isn't, because we, we're, we're gonna have this workshop with the public involved or without the public involved.
I thought it turned this off, I'm sorry.
Right, Joe, either way, we're gonna have that workshop.
Yeah, but we can't, we can't go to public hearing unless, like, unless I'm mistaken from what I heard, this has to be done.
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking for that, because we might miss something, so why couldn't we?
Could be revamped after that, right?
Yeah, you could change it after the public hearing, if you get a, if you get a comment that makes you want to change.
Because what we're doing, if we do it the way you're doing it, we got a month for a meeting, unless you have a special meeting. And then, then it, once it's, if you have a workshop with the town, you get those and you start, it could blow us down to June.
No, I was hoping to keep the window frame tight, but it was, our workshop, our workshop and our, our, our public comment period, the thirty-day public comment period, I mean, is still that period.
Why, why don't you let me do this?